The Board is going to convene in a quorum and we're calling to order the meeting on February 27, 2018, 5:35 PM, 15:15 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas. And I've asked Mr. Fernandez if he'd lead us in a word of prayer and Ms. Kiano in the pledges to the flag. Please stand.
Dear my Father, thank you for the day and thank you for the time together that you had brought this district together safely and pray in this time of need that you watch over us, you watch over our school district and throughout the nation. Pray for our first responders, pray for a little bit of a calming effect after these last couple of days. Pray that you watch over all of those who have come and brought the need of the children. Pray that you keep us safe throughout the rest of this wait, throughout the rest of this school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please draw me in a pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The other one's break?
Mine won't either.
Too much on the wheels? Won't roll. Knock the bearings out of it?
This won't roll.
Those won't roll either.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Board members present this evening are Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maricel Kiano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Mr. Jack Bailey. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The Board now will adjourn to executive session. Well, let's see. Are we going to do...
I got policy. I did a lot of studying this week.
Okay, policy first. Okay, I know you did.
You must have slept well.
Jody, you did a lot of good work.
The first thing I want to do is thank my assistant.
Absolutely.
We studied this book and she'll show it to you in a minute. The state's really made some changes, quite a few of them, so if you have any question on the stuff on the state, please call Jody and she'll be able to help you. I took the local side, she took the state side, so go ahead, Jody, explain both. Show them your book.
Yeah, I was going to say, so a couple times ago, we started going to the electronic for all of the legal policies and sticking with the printout for you guys for the local so we could really focus on that and not waste as much paper. I still print for myself, one that's full, so this is our legal section that was changed by the legislature, acts of the legislature throughout the last legislative session. And then, you know, local is a much thinner policy. Out of 100, over 100 policies that were affected, there were only 20 local policies that were affected. Some of the big things in this legislative session, as you already know, was the criminal history reporting and the different reporting requirements related to teacher-student relationships and the different investigation requirements and changes in standards for that. There was changes to the definition of bullying to give us a little bit more leeway and to change some things with regard to DAP placements and the ability to do those things. There was one interesting change where they said that we needed to adopt local policies about board member visits to campuses. You'll be happy to know that in local policy, TASB just recommended that you follow the regular visitor rules, which is probably what you've all been doing. And so there's no, it shouldn't change the way that you interact with our campuses at all.
We have it outlined in our Board operating procedures that we do not visit campuses, that we call or we are invited to attend campuses rather than make appearances.
Right, but, and so it was really more about your interaction once you're there. And so, you know, not interrupting instruction and things like of that nature. So it was really more the local policy piece was about just interacting on campus like you're a visitor.
When a board member goes on campus, it disrupts the campus because they know that a board member is there. So that is the reason. I mean, we've had our hands slapped before and as far as I'm concerned, it should not ever happen again.
Did anyone notice any questions that you might have had about the TASB update 109 that was pretty large or any of the local policy that was coming from that? Okay, and then the second piece of policy we have is the interim local policy update 2018.01. That is our administrative, you know, pushed or administrative-sponsored changes policy. And so there are only two policies in that tonight. There are, one changes the special ed video and audio equipment. The responsibility of that in this district, we have designated to our Special Education Department. TASB drafted it so that the superintendent would be the contact person for all of the special education audio and video. And so we are changing that or would recommend changing that to be the Executive Director of Special Education, who has been the person in our district that's been responsible for that since we started. The other piece was in, I believe it was DH, I may get that, yeah, it is DH. They had made some changes to DH about what specific arrests had to be reported to your supervisor. And so they specifically listed DWI that was a felony offense. And so we thought that kind of left open this funky DUI charge we have. And we wanted to make it clear that there are different reporting requirements for those that hold CDLs and are like required through our Transportation Department because they have to follow federal DOT guidelines, so some of those are more specific. But we added some language in there, would recommend adding language in there that specifies that any DUI, if you are, you know, if driving is part of your job duties or responsibilities, should be reported to your supervisor as well. And those are the only two changes that we're recommending to local policy tonight beyond those in update 109 that TASB has recommended that we adopt. Any questions?
You did a great job of outlining everything for us. It made it very easy, just as you have the last several times.
Thank you. We're trying to get a system and stick to it so that it is easier for you guys.
I think it's great.
Thanks, Fred.
Policy chairman here.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of Fred? Ask Fred first.
Fred was the first, right, Fred? I'm a trained professional. Is there something you would like to know?
Okay, no, is there, no more discussion, then we'll move on. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to consider the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee or to hearing complaints or charges against a public officer employee. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys duty the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about contemplated litigation or a settlement offer, 551.072, for the purpose of discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene an open session as close to 7:00 PM as we can be here. Thank you. Am I broadcasting now? Okay. All right, we're reconvening in open session and we welcome each of you to our board meeting and hope you enjoy watching the business of this district. If at any time during the course of the meeting, if you came for a special recognition or recognition of an employee, after that particular point in the meeting, you're welcome to leave if you want to, but we're happy to have you hear the full meeting. At this point in time, we're going to have special recognition, Dr. Powell.
All right, well, we've got some wonderful students and other recognitions tonight, so we'll get started. First of all, I just want to share that the United States Academic Decathlon is a 10-event scholastic competition for teams of high school students. Students must take seven multiple choice tests, and these tests are in art, economics, language, literature, math, music, science, and social science. In addition to the seven objective events, there are three subjective events, which are graded by judges. That's the essay, interview, and speech. Academic Decathlon is designed to include students for all achievement levels, and teams consist of nine members who are divided into three divisions based on grade point averages. Tonight, we have two of our Pasadena teams who will be introduced. That's the Pasadena Memorial High School team and the J. Frank Dobie Academic Decathlon team. They earned a berth to the state Academic Decathlon competition by their extraordinary performance at our regional competition. So in your board book, I think it gives you some more details about that, but they, only the top 40 teams in the state are selected to compete at that level. In fact, the teams just got back this past weekend from the state competition. So let me turn it over to Jeremy Meduzia from Pasadena Memorial, who will introduce the Pasadena Memorial team.
He's the speaker, Mr. Ackerman. He's going to be, he's the emcee of all the things that we do at our schools. All right, so we've got eight out of the nine students here. First, we're going to introduce Noah Peter here. He is a freshman, this is his first year, and came in. Yeah, that's right, so he had a binder about as big as he was throwing at him. Next up, we've got Anna Sorakel. He's been with us now for three years, that's right, we haven't made him run away. And he has worked really hard, kind of, he's really taken a very good leadership role for the team, trying to coach some of the younger students we've had. Next up, we've got our scholastic category, Emma Curran, who's a first year, who broke the 7,000 mark right off the top, which is really good for us, we're working on making a great team, so she's coming back next year. That's right. So far, all returners. All right, we've got Christine Osborne, come on down. So Christine's been with us now, this is her second year, and so she's been going to states now twice. On top of doing this, she's also a swimmer, so she is a rather busy individual. All right, we've got Sean Ahmad coming up next. So Sean has actually been with the team since his freshman year, and he's a junior this year, so he's got one more, and he will be a lifer with us. So he has been, he's on, he's a little bit of everything, so he participates in a lot, on top of the hours that he puts in with ACTDEC. All right, next up, we have Brian. Brian is a first year, and he is also the first medal Pasadena Memorial has ever won at the state competition. He took a second place medal.
Wonderful.
All right, next up, we have Emily Garza, come on in. And Emily here is kind of the, she's kind of the team whip. She makes sure everybody's doing what they need to do, so she is definitely the lockdown individual of our team. And last, we have Ian Bach. And Ian has been with us now for two years, and so, yeah, we've got a lot of returners. Actually, out of the team, we only had one senior. The only person who wasn't here was Sarah Gullum, and she is, she is a sophomore, so we've got a lot of returning students, including several that have kind of sitting in the wings waiting to take some spots over. So we're looking for a lot of promise and trying to catch up to the giant that is Dobie over there.
My name's Bob Dari, I'm the coach of the Dobie Decathlon team along with Todd Gary. Todd is back there somewhere, probably cooking a great meal since that's what he did to grade a plane during our competition. I had not intended to be a decathlon coach, I gave up this job about 20 years ago, and then when our coach had suddenly resigned, I took over the job because I knew a lot of the students and I talked them into being in decathlon. And so I took over and it was quite an event-filled year. We had all kinds of things. Noel Pham is our very first student here. Noel was on our team and was... She is the heart and soul of this team. She was the one that kept them coming on Saturdays, Sundays, if they're in eighth day of the week, she would have got them there too. We were up there for Christmas, you know, not day, that's a little, but during the busby, we were up there and for Thanksgiving. These kids are the hardest working people I've ever seen, y'all. I absolutely just love them and they're almost like my own children, in fact, I've seen them more than my own children. Next is Hong Vu. Hong is a junior, he'll be back next year. One question on the math test, on Rhombus, and he hates Lord Rhombus now. He has one question on social studies, but he will be back next year and hopefully will be one of the top 10 students in the state as well for that. Next is Tuncet Ravino. Tuncet Ravino. Vicente, Vicente won a medal in music, and he's quite an distinguished musician himself and incredibly hard worker and a fine young man, just pure, pure soul, which my daughter would speak him of. Next, Freddie Oriol. Freddie is an amazing young man. Freddie finished third in the entire state of Texas. He's a junior. I watched this young man completely be turned around by decathlon, and that's what decathlon's supposed to do, especially with C students, students who for whatever reason are brilliant but just don't make the grade. Freddie is now making the grade sadly, so he'll be a B next year, but he's also doing really, really well for us, and he made it in four or five different events, so, yeah. This is Madison Tobias. Now, when I hired the team, I did some calculations for our team, and we need to have some C students. We had one. And so mid-October, Madison comes in and joins our team. So she wasn't even with us all year, she did great in district, and then well at state, and in fact, she came within a single point of a perfect score in interview. Okay, so just an amazing job, just in a single, just in six weeks. If we had her all year, I don't know what she would have done. Next, we've got Kennedy. Kennedy can alternate, he was with our best recruiting, he'll be on our team next year, he'll be in ours, he's just a sophomore. She has the best, worst name of anybody, Kennedy. And Hong, who is the best freshman. This student is the only one that's not in the dry cleaners tonight. And so anyway, Hong is awesome, and will be on our team next year as well, too, as a B. Yay! Thank you guys for all of your support and help, because we couldn't tell you, this is a fantastic program.
And Coach, did you say y'all got sixth in the state?
Sixth in the state.
Okay, thank you. And do we have decathlon parents that are running out to meet their student but wave at us as y'all leave because y'all help in making sure they get there and do all those amazing things? So thank you to both our Dobie and our memorial parents who support that program, it's awesome. We're going to move on now to honoring seven of our high school students and their teachers for competing with students across the state who become a member of the prestigious 2017-2018 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band, All-State Orchestra, and All-State Choir. And I know she needs no introduction, but I'm going to turn it over to Linda Fletcher, our Director of Fine Arts, to take it from there.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and school board members. I appreciate this opportunity to recognize these talented musicians, their families, and their directors tonight. One of, Pasadena's been named, ISD's been named for the 11th year in a row, one of the best communities for music education. And it's because our music educators constantly go above and beyond their required duties to make sure their students are very successful. They spend many hours with these students, helping them, encouraging them, and it is evident that our community and our administration and our school board supports and encourages quality music in our district. Music students don't just learn notes. These students learn to create, they learn to problem solve, persevere, because they know they have to get it done. They learn to focus in the groups, they learn to collaborate. They know that it takes all of them to make that band, that choir, that orchestra. And they also learn to be accountable for everything they do in the classroom with each other and as their group. In the SAT scores comparison, we, every year at TMEA, before their big concerts that they do, we hear the scores, comparable scores from the SAT from the state, which is 1020 this year, the national average was 1090. And with all 15 all-state groups, the composite score for the all-state groups was 1302, which means 1302 is 212 points above the national average and 282 points above our Texas average. So these students really continue to go above and beyond what they need to do. And before a student can become an All-Stater, they have to go through district tryouts, region tryouts, area tryouts. They go, there were like 65,000 students this year who were trying out for bands, choirs, and orchestras in the state of Texas. It starts, really it starts in the summer, or never stops, does it, Roberto? It continues, but they start getting the music in the summer, and it goes, and then the last tryout is in January. Except for our bands, our band students, they have to try out again when they get to TMEA. And on those, they get to try out, and whenever, wherever they're ranked with the state, then they get to pick which organization they want to be a part of, which all-state performing group they want to be a part of. The students we recognize tonight have achieved the highest rank they can obtain as a musician at the high school level. I would like to present tonight the Pasadena ISD All-State students, their parents, families, directors, and principals, and administrators. Our first one, Mr. Roberto Camper from Dobie High School. Roberto's an all-state band student on alto saxophone. As a matter of fact, I told you that they had to audition again when they got to TMEA. Roberto is the number one all-state alto saxophone player in the state of Texas. Roberto is a junior, we're excited about that, he's a junior in the J. Frank Dobie High School Band, where he is principal alto sax in the wind ensemble, and has also served the past two years as drum major of the Long Harn Marching Band. Roberto, a first-time All-Stater, has been awarded all-region and all-area honors for three years, currently studies with Dan, is it Galloch? And Adam Blakely, and hopes to attend the University of Michigan to major in saxophone performance. I would like to ask the following people to stand and be recognized with, anyone from Roberto's families here would be loved to recognize you. Mr. Moses from Dobie, in the back, standing in the back. And Mr. Erickson, his band director is also in the back. Congratulations. Oops, I forgot to put your picture up, I'm sorry, Roberto, it's a wonderful picture. Johnny To is a sophomore at TMEA, All-Stater from Pasadena Memorial High School, sophomore. Johnny is involved in activities revolving around music, including the Maverick Chamber Choir, the Symphony Orchestra of Houston Youth Symphony, and of course, the Maverick Wind Symphony. Other incorporated interests are volleyball, meeting people in summer camps and festivals. He is driven by endless passion for music and aspires to earn the grand opportunity of touring internationally with the National Youth Orchestra of the United States of America. The summer of 2019 is when he wants, he wants to earn a bachelor's degree in music education from the University of Texas, and finally, to earn a master's and doctorate degree in clarinet performance at the Eastman School of Music. As a sophomore, when Johnny tried out, he was number 19 out of 64 clarinettists in the state of Texas. That's amazing. I would like to ask the following people to stand and be recognized, Johnny's family and friends. His mom and dad. Mr. Harvey, his director, in the back also. And I saw Mr. Richardson, and Mr. Rich is on the other side of the, are in the back. Thank y'all for being here and for supporting them. Charles Dial is a junior at Sam Brabron High School, and this year marks his second year, he's a second-year all-state musician. Charles is also involved in many scholarly pursuits and organizations, being rated fifth in the class of 2019, and a member of the National Honor Society and New Alpha Theta Honor Society. Charles hopes to major in physics at a prestigious university after he graduates. Physics, wow. At region and area competitions, just a minute, I want to say, with over 100 students trying out, because Charles plays the trumpet, and Charles finished all-state, he was 12th out of the 40 in the state. So I'm excited for all of our young men. Congratulations, Charles. Could I please ask Charles's family or friends to stand and be recognized? Thank you. Mr. Embry, his director's in the back, he can wave in the blue shirt. And I did see his principal, Ms. Reyes, right in the back also. There are some front row seats here, we have lots of seats in the front row, right? Right, board members? Our next All-Stater is Jennifer Tofola from South Houston High School. She is a junior. Jennifer is a junior, all-state, she made the all-state mixed choir, is the vice president of the choir, and a member of both the varsity choir and the show choir, Red Rhythm. She was involved in student council and this year played the title role of Edron Drood in South Houston High School's production of The Mystery of Edron Drood. I would like to ask the following people to stand and be recognized, if Jennifer's family and friends are here. Wonderful, thank you for your support. I'm going to hold off on the directors and the principals because the next three people are from South Houston, and they're going to have to wait for three or four times. South Houston had four All-Staters on the choir. The next All-Stater from South Houston is Sidney Horton. Sidney is a high school junior at South Houston High School, she made the all-state treble choir and varsity choir member, who has every year competed in the all-state process and solo ensemble, has improved in both competitions. She takes all AP classes, plays both volleyball and basketball, and hopes to one day go to Sam Houston State University. Woo-hoo! And double major in music and psychology, great double major, would need that. Could I ask the following people, her family or friends, if they're here, to please stand? He's also the assistant principal at South Houston High School, so that's exciting. Our next South Houston High School Stater is Jonathan Escobar. Jonathan is a junior at South Houston High School, he made the all-state mixed choir, is a proud member also of the varsity choir. This year, he participated in his first musical ever and had a leading role. He wants to continue to sing and pursue music studies in the future. Way to go. Come back and sing me, please, all you music people. I want to ask the following, following people, I think Grandpa Warren is here, this is Ms. Varvudis's husband. Grandpa Warren, Ms. Warren Hernandez is at everything, he helps his wife through everything. We have an assistant, another assistant choir director, and that's him at South Houston. He doesn't get paid, but that's him, he's at everything, he helps out. So thank you, sir, I appreciate you being here for him. Our last All-Stater is from South Houston Choir, Matthew Linares. Matthew is the senior from South Houston High School, he made the all-state tenor bass choir. He's an active participant in NHS, the varsity choir, which he's the president, and the South Houston High School Rocketry Program. I think I got that right. He was recently selected to be a Texas All-State member for the second year in a row, and he has been accepted into Texas A&amp;M University's Engineering Program. has been accepted into Texas A&amp;M University's Engineering Program. I would like to ask the following people to stand. His parents, family, friends. The two directors who have worked night and day and night and day, Ms. Barvutis and Ms. Castillo, would y'all two please stand there in the back? One's here, one's over there. The principal, Ms. Andrea Winkie, for your support, and all of your assistant principals that are here. I truly appreciate working in Pasadena and this district, and the support they give for fine arts, athletics, all the special programs that we have in our district. They constantly know the importance of this. And students, I want you to know, these wonderful people behind you give you 100% of their support every day, and they do what is best for you. And they know the importance of fine arts. They know the arts prepare our students to go into our workforce for the next, in the 21st century, and for those coming up. You've been a great example, and I want you to take all of this back to your school and show your people, and your students, and your friends, and everybody, how exciting it can be and what a wonderful experience you had. Please join me in congratulating these young men and women.
What a talented group, young men and women. We have another exciting presentation, board members. It's a check presentation, so I'm not going to steal any of the thunder, but I'm going to call Olivia Smith Daughtry, our executive director of grants, to come forward to tell us the big news.
Well, good evening. I wore the wrong heels. Good evening. I am really, really excited to introduce Ray Hobson. He's the district manager for Dollar General Corporation, and he will be doing the check presentation.
Good evening. I didn't know I was going to be in such a steam company this evening.
It's steaming.
On behalf of Dollar General and the American Association for Libraries, we're proud to present a check to Thompson Intermediate School to help replace their library that was damaged in the storm. From promo, $20,000 check.
Yes. Sure does.
Is the air duct on?
You know it's hot when I'm hot.
Board members, that's all of our special recognition for tonight.
We have no public comments at this time, so let's move on with the business of the meeting. First, the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is personnel section.
Madam President, I move to approve addenda A and B in the personnel section.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Keano, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Will you introduce those, please?
Absolutely. We would like to welcome you to Pasadena ISD as the new campus athletic coordinator at South Houston High School, and you have lots of support, we can clearly see here. Would you like to introduce any family members or anyone here with you?
First of all, so excited to be here and join the Pasadena team. With me is my wife, Jimmy Longstreet. Two-year-old that won't stop eating fruit juice. The six-month-old is Grayson. You guys built some babysitters back there.
That's certainly a great start. Amber McNish. There she is.
There you go.
She is the new PE and Health Coordinator. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to introduce anybody with you this evening?
So, my husband is a coach, he couldn't miss his game tonight. So, he wasn't able to join us, but my mother-in-law came to his place. This is my mom, a fellow educator of, she's retired about 36 years. I mean, I liked it, Matthew Holden, and as many, and then I brought some beloved work family members.
We certainly wish both of you well in your new endeavors. We know you'll do a great job. Next is consideration and possible approval of the Deaf TOD for the purpose of providing specialty design instruction to students in the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf, RDSPD, for paraprofessionals for the purpose of providing educational audiological services to general and special education students in Pasadena ISD beginning August 13, 2018. Motion by Ms. Keano, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Board members, I just want to remind you, we're bringing this program back to our district. We will no longer be participating with the co-op that we previously were, but with Region Four, providing assistance here to our students at home.
I think it's wonderful.
I do too.
The parents are definitely excited, the ones we've met with, and so we're looking forward to being able to give them a quality program right here in their own district.
How many students are we talking about?
I think there's over 60, but Debbie Barrett's here, and she can answer that.
61.
You were close.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to move to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval of the Pasadena ISD extended year programs for summer 2018.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I think it's a great outlay of what we're planning to do. I want to make sure that we're going to have enough teachers that will participate with us. I know sometimes in the past, we've lacked some.
I'm getting some head nods out there from Karen Hickman and Becky Benner. We did this differently in the fact that we brought it all together, so you can see how busy we're going to be this summer, giving great opportunities to kids, but do you want to address the teacher need?
In most of the areas we hit don't have issues getting the teachers. There's a couple of areas that we have to recruit, and then we do try to recruit our finest.
Great. I know you do. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval to the Spark Park Contract at Metter Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion?
It seems like that the cost on that is really accelerated from when we did the first one over at Parks Elementary a number of years ago.
Well, and this one is including a walking track and basketball court, so I think this is, Olivia, pretty comparable to what we've done in the past in those areas, or? She's coming forward.
Good.
Ms. Bolton's going to have Disneyland over there pretty soon, but she's got a nice playground. No comment.
It's actually a little bit more. Because this is a part of a special initiative to take care of park deserts, and so there's a little bit more money behind it.
Okay, great.
Good.
Are you going to invite us, Ms. Bolton?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have an ambulance.
Because of the walking track.
She's got that right.
If it's a walking track, have an ambulance.
But you have to run. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of multiple grant awards.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration, thank you, Olivia, always.
Oh, I tell you.
For all you do. All you do.
He keeps kidding.
Yeah.
Thank you and your team.
Yes. Consideration and possible approval of PSTN access lines for VolP, PBX system and pots. And that's not what you smoke. CSP. I don't know why I said that. Okay.
Plain old telephone system is what I'm sold, right? Plain old telephone, let's refocus. That was funny.
CSP number 18P-013DG to the companies who met the specifications.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of cellular phone service, CSP number 18P-014DG, award to the company who met the specifications.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of LAN multi-mode fiber cabling, CSP number 18-016DG, award to the company who met the specifications.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
Arthur, who is the company that got the award?
The company is just electric, and this was an E-rate CSP, so it went to companies throughout the nation.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Have we always termed this thing like this?
No.
I mean, this is, it might only, I mean, which says approval of this, like this one here, back it up.
You met the specifications?
Yeah.
No.
Why did we do that?
Why did we write it that way? Go ahead.
Derek recommended that we write it this way because if there had been some change in the award because somebody was disqualified between the time we published the agenda to the board meeting, and in the board, in the board meeting itself, we would then have to have a new posting, and then we'd have the 10-day. So this would be one of the few times that we would do that when we have these types of awards.
I'd like, in the future, if you need to put me aside or something or other, somebody tell me what I'm voting on, other than just the person that was awarded the contract. If you don't mind.
No, no, sir. Now, we actually have it in.
It's in there. On the sentence before that.
Financial implications, we put it, we put it down in the financial implications.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did we vote on this whole? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School's speech and debate qualifying team members to travel to three national championship events. The TOC Tournament of Champions in Kentucky, NCFL Grand National Tournament, and NSDA National Speech and Debate Association Championship.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion?
They've earned it.
Yeah.
Good for them.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of two Pasadena Memorial High School students and one teacher to travel to Lincoln, Nebraska on June 25th through June 30th to attend the National Thesbian Competition and Festival.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of bondy intermediates' travel changes from previous approved board agenda item to travel to Washington DC to reflect new dates of May 31st through June 6th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion?
Board members, we had to make some changes, and Ms. Lee, I know is here, because there was some conflict with early college high school events that were going on, and then also the way that they were traveling. So you want to come to the mic and just make sure they, you've approved this, but there were some changes, so we brought it back.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members. We were, the awarded vendor, Greenlight Tours, who booked the trip for us, was unable to secure transportation for our students while they were in Washington DC, and so we needed to change our trip dates to add some time on the beginning and the end, so that our students would still be able to attend the trip and have adequate transportation while in Washington DC.
Very good. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Policy update and review. Mr. Roberts?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to take a moment to call on my assistant, Jody, and she will, she'll give you a quick background. If there's any questions, I know y'all are all educated.
We'll ask you.
You'll ask me, and I will refer to my assistant. Go ahead, Jody.
Awesome. As we went over in the policy committee earlier tonight, TASB update 109 are the TASB-recommended changes that are stemming from the 85th Legislative Session that was, happened last summer. So most of that policy update focused on legal policy, which the board has no local control over. Out of over 100 different policies that were affected by that update, only 20 of them were local policies. Some significant changes were Senate Bill 7 that deals with student educator relationships, some changes to bullying definitions, some expansion on the video/audio sped requirements. I think that kind of hits the high points of that one, and then moving to, do you want me to jump to your next bullet point before we get there? Or do we want to wait?
No, please, go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to jump ahead a little bit in this discussion and talk about 2018.01. We're recommending two changes as an administration beyond those that TASB recommended. We will be amending the special education policy that focuses on video and audio monitoring to reflect the current appropriate person in our administration, which is a special education executive director, to be responsible for that video and audio monitoring versus our superintendent. Across the state of Texas, you know, schools are not always as big as ours, and so the superintendent typically is the point person. However, in Pasadena, that's not the case. It's our special education director. And then in the DH policy, there was some language left out about, or we felt like there was some language left out about reporting DUIs if you, to your supervisor if you were arrested or charged with a DUI. And driving responsibilities are part of your job duties. We did that to ensure that we can stay in compliance with our insurance carriers and make sure that we don't have employees that have those sorts of charges operating vehicles on district time.
Thank you, Jody. Any discussion?
Fred, why is it turning on there? Where?
You want to make the?
Why is my, because?
Make the motion, Fred.
I don't have time, I have to work.
Fred.
I make a motion.
I move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, that we approve the policy update and review. Any discussion? We've broken this down into two, so let's do, first do the adoption of the TASB localized We've broken this down into two, so let's do, first do the adoption of the TASB Localized Policy Update 109 affecting local policies. So that's Mr. Roberts and Ms. Sullivan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible adoption of local district update 2018.01 affecting DH local and EHBAF local.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Financial Section, consideration and possible approval of the Budget Amendments.
I move approval of the Budget Amendments.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Independent Auditor for the 2017-18 School Year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
What was last year's?
It's the same firm and I believe, Nina, this is the last year of the five years, so we'll go back out for RFP next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the Operations Section, consideration and possible approval of the transfer of 2011 Bond Program unused project funds to the bond contingency pool.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Final Change Order Number 005 for the Marshall-Kendrick Middle School Project.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr., excuse me, Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Change Order Number 001 for the Early College Annex at Sam Reberon High School Project.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Change Order Number 001 for the Early College Annex at South Houston High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval, Change Order Number 001 for the Early College Annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 025 for the new Doby High School ninth-grade campus project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 006 for the new May Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number F001 for the new May Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
It is a beautiful, beautiful school.
It's going to be very pretty. Absolutely.
It is big.
Looks big on that land, doesn't it?
Yeah, it is. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Budget and Engineering Services Agreement for the Synthetic Turf Replacement and Drainage Improvements at Veterans Memorial Stadium Project. Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Well, board members, I just want to say this is some of the damage that we have sustained during Hurricane Harvey, so we're still working with our insurance and hoping to get some of these monies recouped. I think we've agreed on the turf and some of the drainage, but as you know, the way that we put it down last time was not going to stay good for what we need for our students at that surface and playing on that surface, so we're looking at drainage and, is it asphalt that we're going back down with, Kevin? No.
We will not go back down.
Okay.
That's coming out.
That's coming out. Okay, very good. So we're going to do it right. Let me just say that and then I'll stop. Okay, we're going to do it right this time and hopefully we'll file with insurance and FEMA and recoup a lot of the cost here.
The asphalt was from the old AstroTurf that was there years ago.
Oh, my.
So we're going to be bringing it up to current standards with drainage material and rock below the new turf and pad, so this problem that you had in the last flood won't happen again.
So we're solving a problem for a long time.
What's the newest and greatest turf they're putting down?
Well, it depends on which member you talk to, but Fred, they're all about the same. Some have more fibers in them than others, like maybe two or three per square foot, but we're going to go out and we're going to be talking to, we have a specification that several turf vendors can submit a proposal for.
Right.
And these, these people are qualified. They know what they're doing. We just want to give folks a chance to step up to the plate and give you the best product for the dollar.
That's what we want.
Madam President or Madam Superintendent, this is one of those items that you cannot make a determination on by low bid. It's going to take professionals making a good decision on what's out there because sometimes they think it goes the gamut. And I don't know what the newest and greatest is, but some of them are better for injuries, some of them are better for athletics, some of them are, are better for, if the stuff is going to last 20 years, so that's great, but if it's going to cause injuries or whatever the case may be, back it up and get something that, for less time, but your kids don't get hurt. It's just, I just reiterate, it's one of those items that you got to look at, the total package, like you said, you cannot make a decision just based on, on cost alone. I just, I just want to...
Well, hopefully that'll be part of the specifications, too.
It will, Bill.
Yeah. And do we have a timeline?
Well, I hope and pray we have a timeline, but it'll be before football season starts, right?
Three and a half.
Short window.
Well, so we're working with contractors now to get it right after it's approved.
The goal is to have the turf and the new scoreboard from the bond in by football season.
Awesome.
I'm sorry, and new lighting.
We've been given strict instructions that this got to happen now, so we understand.
Great. Thank you very much.
Whatever happened to that guy who said that last time? He didn't get it done.